We definitely want this one connected. We definitely want this one connected. That's what I got for now. So go for it. Good evening, everybody. Like to call to order the SLUC Board meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty-five. We will start the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're going to interview eight people publicly for the two positions open for these seats up here. So let's start the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to get the list of candidates and I think they're in order as they kind of came to us. And as we call your name, we'll have you come up to the podium, ask you a couple of questions each maybe, and then we're going to continue on our meeting. And after Department Head items, a couple of other things, then we'll, we will discuss it publicly and we hope to pick the two candidates tonight. Can't guarantee nothing, I guess, if we don't all agree, but that's the hope anyway, so.
And there's public comment after the candidates?
It'll be public comment after the ca- after that. I, I was going to say at public comment, maybe I will, I'll say it again, it's, it's certainly public comment, but I don't want to see of bashing of an individual person. If you, if you have, it, because you're in support of somebody or you have concerns about how we might pick, fine, but I don't, I would hate to see, you know, personal slander against any one of these individuals that have, that have been willing to step up to the plate to, to put their neck out for this, so. With that said, Matthew Beeler, would you please come up?
How you doing, Matthew Beeler, Forty-One Meadow?
How are you tonight?
I'm all right, how you doing?
Not too bad. What, what makes you interested in filling all these seats?
Um, I've been in town about three years, no, I'm a newcomer. Been on Park for about two years now, just recently voted Committee Chair. And just kind of seeing some of the business in town with the issues that we've had with budgeting in Park and getting things done. When I saw the two slots open, I figured, you know, maybe I can help at a little bit of a higher level. I'm just all about seeing things get done most efficiently and affordably as possible. And whatever benefits the town people and the kids especially, I figure is in our best interest.
Is this something, do you plan to run in, in March?
Undetermined. We'll see how, I want to see how it goes. I have had on and off about it, but we'll see how it goes.
I should say that to everyone out, out there in this room and watching that this, these positions are only until the March vote and then these will have to be, you know, ran for like any other SLUC Board position. So it isn't just the, it isn't to fill the entire term, it's just to fill until we get to March vote. Anybody else have a question?
Sure. So one of the big things that we do when on the Board of Selectmen is, is look at the taxes and everything. Can you tell me your, what are your thoughts on the, on the town portion of the taxes compared to the school portions?
So, I mean, I wouldn't say I'm a hundred percent fully aware of all the taxes, I don't dig into all the pieces, but you know, I see my tax bill every six months like everybody else. The taxes are high. I do have concerns about the school portion versus the town portion. Again, being on Park, I get to see what the town is working with. We've been in default for much longer than I've been here, so it makes it hard for us to do things, especially with the cost of everything going up. I will say I'm one of the people who understands that the reason why taxes have gone so high is not because of the rates, because of the value of the homes. So it's got, it's not like the town's raising rates, but prices of the homes went up, so that's what affects things. But yeah, I do have minor concerns about the town's piece versus the schools' pieces. I think the school's budget is probably a little bit out of control, even though I do support the school a hundred percent. And full transparency, my wife is a teacher at the high school, so no, no punches being pulled or anything.
Assuming you get on, on the board, what's one of the big ideas that you would like to implement?
I don't know if I'd have one specific big idea. I just want to see things get done and done properly. You know, Park is kind of close to my heart, I guess. Budget is a major issue. Finding ways to try and reduce what we spend on other things to try and open up funds, take care of the things we have to. Specifically, Park has a lot of costs and things that we've had to keep pushing off because of being in default and because of the budget that's allocated. Nobody's fault for that, it's just the way it is, but I would like to see things done as efficiently as possible. That would really be my goal.
Now, speaking of Park, since you're, you're on that and were recently voted as the Chair?
Yes.
Obviously, you would have to step down from that position.
That would be understanding.
Would you be interested in taking on the ex officio, assuming that you were put on the Selectment?
That was what I probably figured would be the direction that things would go. It would make sense. James, you've been on for almost a year now, I believe?
Over a year.
For over a year. We had Mr. Bloom on before, but it would be my understanding that I would have to step down from the Chair position, potentially off the board and if decided, go ex officio.
And what is the number one issue that you would like to solve? What problem do you see that's a, that's a big ticket item?
Again, I think it comes back to spending and having the money available to do things. You know, like I said, within Park alone, I see things getting put off all the time. I just started recently watching the meetings in more in depth instead of just reading the notes. You know, there was a long discussion about having the roof repaired over on the horse sheds and whatnot. It seems like there's always a discussion about are we going to put something off or are we going to get it, get it done, no matter what it is. It's always put it off or get it done, or just don't do it at all. And I prefer that we be able to find a way to get it done.
Are there any personal issues that you might have with town personnel or other employees of the town?
No, I haven't been in town long enough to have any kind of personal issues and I know that may work against me, you know. I, I, there's a tradition in New Hampshire and a lot of other kind of small towns that if you haven't been in town for a minute, know everybody, you may not necessarily be somebody who's trusted, but you know, I have a pretty tight little community within the Scouts. I'm also the Committee Chair for Scouts. I'll be going on Scout Master with Troop Twenty-Four. We have a nice little group there and I have a bunch of people who know that I have put everything else first over myself. But no, I don't have any personal issues with anybody. Like I said, I haven't been here long enough to have any enemies.
And do you see any conflicts of interest with town contractors or any of the town business?
No, I do not.
Personally or with your business?
I do not, no.
You know, conflict questions was, was my other one, so we'll let you ask them. What do you have, Bruce?
How's your attendance been at Park?
Uh, I think I missed one meeting due to a surgery. Other than that, I've been there. Actually, I came in about seven days after my surgery to make sure I was there, so yeah, I've been pretty solid with it.
How often do they meet?
Once a month, third Tuesday.
We meet at least twice a month, sometimes every Monday of the month.
Yep.
And we need people that are willing to make the commitment to be here every meeting.
That would be my goal, sir.
How'd you, how'd your, and we have subcommittees that we're on and we have to work on other things in the meantime, so I mean, it's quite a commitment.
Yep. Well, let me say this, I don't currently work. I am a disabled vet, not supposed to work due, at the VA's bidding. So I wouldn't say I have all the time in the world, I'm a stay-at-home dad, still have my own life, still have other commitments, but I'm fully understanding that the commitment this is going to take and I am fully prepared to give everything I can to it.
All right, Mr., all right. Good, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, gentlemen.
Next on our list is Sharon Loth, is that right? If I mispronounce your name, you can throw something at me, that's all right.
Sorry, people mispronounce it all the time, so I'm sort of used to it.
How was it supposed to be?
Left, like I left the room without the T.
Okay, fair enough.
I've been in WAREs my third year, moved here from Arizona, I still run a company, I've had five companies. I felt it was important that if I, once I was here, to get involved in the community. This is actually my first foray into anything that is leans towards political, although my father was a diplomat and worked for the government his whole life, so I'm trying to pick that up and move it forward now that I am an empty nester and have time to, to get involved.
So I guess you answered my question, what makes you interested in being on this board and have you ever watched any of our meetings and?
I have to be honest, I have not, this just came up very quickly, so I wasn't really familiar with much since the last couple of years, I've just been trying to get settled and I restarted my company. But I've been involved in some of the local things, the local Authors Guild I got involved in, and I'm trying to get involved in a lot more things that are about WARE. So this was, came up and I thought, well, why not throw my hat in the rain, see what happens?
Sure.
So you're, do you write, or are you just interested in?
So I have one book that's published, it was a young adult thriller. I have a children's book that, that is on its way to getting published, but I run an international consulting company, so I work in shopping centers and airports and I help retailers become successful. We're launch retailers, we work with developers who are struggling to make money, so I'm all about coming in and creating income for my clients, so it's all about that sort of thing. I've also been in other industries as well.
The town could certainly stand a little more income.
Yes, well, I like to think out of the box, I tend to be a creative thinker, so sometimes my ideas are way out of the box and sometimes they're not.
So you're not currently on any committees or subcommittees or involved in any of our town trust funds or anything like that?
I, I have to admit, I am committee-less. I thought this was a first step to see what happens.
So similar questions, as I asked Matt, you know, what are your thoughts on our tax situation, specifically comparing the town portion of taxes to the school portions?
So I did look at the, what was online in terms of your budget. I don't understand all of the line items. For me, education is incredibly important, so I'm not quite sure how, how funds are being dispersed or what the reasoning is behind it, because I'm, again, new to this, but I think understanding that is important for just about everyone. And I certainly think that education in general is really key for the next generation to, to take our country and our city and town forward. I think that's pretty important, it's always been important to me. I spent my retirement educating my children and the reason I moved here is because they decided to stay on the East Coast. So I moved from Arizona to, to get here so that I saw them more than once a year after spending all that money on their education.
So what is the number one issue that you would like to solve?
I'd like to see that the town in general is, is cohesive in a, in a way that people, you know, for me, moving to a small town was about neighborhood, about meeting people, working with people, coming together, making sure that people are happy, that we look after the people in our town, I think that's very important. I believe in paying it forward. I'm all about karma and understanding how that's important and taking care of your neighbors. The first thing I did when I moved in was introduce myself to all the neighbors in my area, told them that, you know, if things happen, if they needed anyone, I was the kind of neighbor that you could come and knock on my door. So I think that's important.
And a big idea that you would like to, to implement?
Well, a big idea is to really look at other ways that the town can make money and that's through, through different type of events and community outreach that could be potentially unique for WARE. That's basically what I do around the world, is I help people think out of the box and make money in different ways, which are creative and fun, but also add to bringing people together in a way that I think is, is very positive.
And so I assume you haven't made any enemies of our town personnel?
None that I've known, none I know of yet, and my neighbors are mostly cows on one side, so I don't think I've, I don't think I've aggravated any of them yet.
Do you see any conflicts of interest with our contractors or other town businesses?
No, since I really don't know that many people, I don't see any conflicts. I'm very social, I just haven't been quite as social yet, working my way into that.
Okay, that's the end of my questions.
I think I did, do you plan on running in March, you know?
You know, I think it would depend on, on my experience. I would hope that the experience was positive and would entice me to continue down that road. As I said, I'd like to get involved in the town and I'd like to be able to, to make it a, an even better place than it is now, which I find to be quite wonderful. And of course, anytime somebody says to you, where were you from, and I say, where, and they say, where, I think it's a great starter.
Where the time commitment we have for this Selectment, it's, now it's like every other Monday, a couple Mondays a month, it, it's going to be every Monday and starting in the fall for budget season and all that. You have a problem with it?
I have no, no problem at all, I, I tend to work twenty-four-seven, so it just, you know, it's just another, another meeting on the schedule and I think anything that you commit to is important so that you make sure that your schedule is clear to, to be part of it. I think it's an important, it's an important part of the community.
We usually have a Selectment on a number of other committees, I mean, and we've got a whole bunch of openings right now.
By?
So the, there'd be another day or two a month, all depends on which committee it was for.
Well, I'm very passionate about getting involved, I think it's important. I, I think that a lot of people say they want to get involved, but they don't do it. So in my industry, which is the shopping center industry, I was on the faculty for the International Council of Shopping Centers for, for many, many years as a volunteer to teach the next generation. I've taught all over the world for my industry as a volunteer, because I do think it's important to pay it forward. I think all of that teaches the next generation as well, what the values are, what you feel your values are. And I, I feel that once you're part of a community, that community should be very important and that you should look after the community. And I apologize that I don't know all the details of everything going on, I assume that I would learn, I'm a pretty good learner.
There's a lot to learn.
I imagine so. But I could say there's a lot to learn about the shopping center industry that you probably don't know. And not, not just the shopping part.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the time, I appreciate it.
Somebody that I know is new to this room, Mr. Ricky Hippler?
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you?
Happy to be here.
What makes you interested?
As you all know, I was on the board for nine years. I stepped away, thought I'd had enough and sitting there in the recliner, I've rethought my, my, my ideas. I kind of miss it, if anybody can, you know, find out why I fell on my head to say that, but I do miss it. I miss the interaction with the employees, I miss the interaction with the town administrator, interaction with the public on a, on a Monday basis. So I'm going to jump ahead and I was thinking about running in March, putting my name on the ballot again. But, you know, the two positions came up and I know how difficult it is to, to hit the ground running in that seat on that side of the table and, and pick up all the lingo and know all the different aspects of it and I figured almost halfway through the, the term might be, you know, an easy transition for somebody with some experience to get behind the, the chair and, you know, get up to speed in a couple of weeks and take off running.
So you're currently not on any, on any committees or subcommittees or Board Trustees of anything?
Other than coming up in my twenty-first year on the Fire Department, I am not on any other committees, nope.
And again, tax issue, you know, there's a town portion, there's a school board portion that makes up our total tax bill.
Very familiar.
Can you, what are your thoughts on, on that dynamic?
As we all know, the, the town makes up roughly twenty percent of the tax bill. Unfortunately, it's, it's a hard balance and, and being a taxpayer, I understand that, but also listening to the employee needs, being a town employee, sometimes there is things that need to be put forward that, that are needed. And I understand that that comes from the taxpayer. Like I said, I'm not immune to paying my tax bill, but unfortunately, as, as the town grows, as services are, are higher demand, unfortunately, we need to supply that, the, the demand for the services to the taxpayer and that includes sometimes raising the tax rate. Unfortunately, it's not the, that's not the pretty part of the job, obviously, but unfortunate necessary. When you can cut out, you know, when you can cut out areas where it's, where it's light or where's, I mean, where it's heavy and lighten up a little bit, you do. But again, that's not all the time, unfortunately.
And a big ticket issue that you would like to see solved, whether it's something that's been continuing from years past or something that's more recently, you know, brought up, what's, what's like a number one issue, a number one problem that needs to get resolved?
I think, you know, I know we're all busy, but sometimes I think that the, that the departments feel alienated and I'd like to get down and actually see what they do, see what they, what their struggles are. Not saying it's a big problem, obviously, but it's a problem that I'd like to get down there and, and interact with them, not that I didn't when I was on the board. There was many Saturdays that yours truly was moving the trash trailer in and out of the, the building, because I was the only one in the area that has CDLA and I was a town employee and it was able, so. So I think there's a, there's a good trust there between the employees and myself and the, and the taxpayers, my friends, the ones I know, I've lived in town for thirty-eight years, so I've known a few people in town.
And a big idea, something that, you know, really is something that should be implemented?
I think maybe, you know, I've heard it up, I've heard it in the, you know, again, everybody has their, their ideas of Facebook, but a lot of times I read down through the, the comments and it seems like the information sometimes has a hard time getting from this building out. Public, it, it, obviously, it's all public information, but sometimes it has a hard, hard time getting out of here into the, to the, I don't want to say to every household, but a fair majority of them, and I think that that would be something I'd like to see is maybe a little better use of, I mean, because I'm, I'm a subscriber to the Boskwin Town page and I'm always getting notifications from them, so, right, wrong or indifferent, it's just, it's just a thought, so.
And any personal issues with town employees or?
Not that I know of, I'm sure if there was, I would have heard about it by now, so.
And any conflicts with our contractors, you know, subcontractors or other town business entities?
Not unless you guys opt to switch to my employer right now for heating and propane, which I would abstain from, so.
That's it for me.
Well, my standard question, you already know the answer to, we know, we all know the answer to, I mean, you served, you know the time.
The time commitment is huge.
Yeah.
It was, it was a little rocky there in the, in the COVID time, we, we fared that. After that, you know, there was a time when this building ran out of power on Christmas and I was down here at Christmas fueling the generator, because the generator at the time was not working, so if there's anybody who understands that, I guess it's me.
One thing that seemed to happen a lot in the past was, for lack of a better term, we'll call it kicking the can. Personally, I hate that. We're, we're here as elected officials to, to take care of things, not kick the can. And how would you? Previously, I mean, when you were, as a Chair here, that was, that was something that came up occasionally. We, I just don't want to do that.
Nope, and that's, that's understandable, again, I was, you know, I was Chair for, what, five years, I think it was, and, and, you know, I always said that we act as a board, we don't act as individual, obviously, we all have one-fifth of the responsibility. But I agree, I agree that there was a lot of loose, there's still a lot of loose ends out there. You know, something will come up and next thing you know, we, you know, the board will go hard on it and then it kind of just falls to the back burner and then the, the next hot topic comes up. Unfortunately, I've always felt, and, and even as I've stayed along with the meetings, is that unfortunately, the, the board is, is more reactive than proactive. You know, a topic comes up, try to address it, address it if you can, but sometimes it gets left open, so. No, I agree, I think there's, there's still a lot of topics that, that have open ends on them and, and I would like to see those come to a conclusion, whether it's meeting a little more often during the summer, instead of being the, every other week. That's the time commitment that, that I'm willing to make and that, that you've mentioned, so. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Ben Goodwin?
How are you doing?
Good, yourself?
Good, thanks.
What makes you interested in trying this out?
Well, as I wrote in the letter, I've been a public servant practically my whole life. I couldn't get in the military, which is one of my big regrets in life, but I was able to get on the Fire Department when I was eighteen and I've always enjoyed giving back to the community, so. I'm about to retire, Thursday's my last shift.
Wow.
And I now have the ability to devote some time to the town that I wasn't previously able to, so that's why.
You think you might be interested in running in March, or?
Absolutely, I wouldn't be here tonight if I wasn't. There's no point in wasting time with?
Yeah, right.
Halfway going through it.
So how many years have you lived in town?
I've lived here since twenty thirteen, yeah.
And are, are you on, are you currently on any committees or subcommittees?
Not any committees or subcommittees, no. I'm the WARE Animal Control Officer. So that, keep your dogs registered in the new yard, please.
And are you on any other, like Board of Trustees?
No, no, I am unencumbered. I am, like I said, after Thursday, I'm prepared to, prepared to work.
And so again, we have, we have town portion of taxes, we've got the school board that makes up our total tax burden. What are your thoughts on the dynamics between the two sides of that?
Well, just like has been already spoken about, the, the town portion, which is only a fraction of what the school budget is, is, that's where the meat really gets into it, you know, we have a lot of services that we need to provide, people expect, but there's only so many ways to spend the dollar. You have to divide it up a certain number of ways and my feeling is, is we do a fair job at it, but I think there's a lot of other places that we can maybe make some savings or, you know, increase revenue, collecting taxes that aren't paid, you know, good, you know, if we have to take property, we take, you know, however we do that, we're making sure that we're adequately getting the revenue that we need.
And in terms of problems that you might see in town, what's, what's the number one big item that should be fixed?
Well, I, like I said, I started in the Fire Department when I was eighteen. Well, I, like I said, I started in the fire department when I was 18 and I've been in public safety my whole life. Currently a emergency dispatcher with Goffstown and we dispatch for where, police, we used to do fire, but they moved over to capital area. And there's been some recent improvement with the radio communications, but it's still hazardous. It's, it's gotten to the point of being dangerous and I know it's being worked on, but there's still a long ways to go if you have an officer out on a call and they're not able to reach dispatch. So I I think our public safety infrastructure, not just with radios, but, you know, making sure that we have the money available for upkeep of the equipment. I know we default budget, default budget, that doesn't buy necessarily everything we need to keep it going, but. And I know that recent changes that aren't really our fault with grants and other sources of funding that might have dried up or might be drying up, we're going to have to get a little more creative on how we raise enough money to take care of what we need to get.
And is there, is there a big idea, you know, something new to to implement?
I think a big idea would, Ricky kind of hit on a little bit, is making sure that we have the public have easy access to to what we do. I believe in transparency. I got nothing to hide and I don't want anybody to think we do. So being transparent and open with our information and making sure that the public has access to it all the time is kind of important to me, so.
And any conflicts of interest with?
Other than being the where ACO, I see if if something comes up where it directly affects me, my wife is the minute taker for the boards and, you know, obviously, if there's some sort of a conflict there, I'd refuse myself from, from the discussion and let it be a committee of four to talk about it, you know what I mean? But other than that, I don't see any. I don't own a business in town, I don't. I, I mean, I I do have a handyman business, but I mean, I don't own a building that is taxed other than my house, so I don't see any issues.
And in terms of, and I guess that's one of the questions, in terms of being animal controlled, are you looking to continue in that position or is that something you'd give up when you, if and when you?
I would expect to stay in it and if that is a conflict, sorry, chief. But I expect that I'd be able to stay in it, you know? It's a part-time job. I'd, I think last year, if you look at the town report, I made like 1,200 bucks, so it's, it's very part-time and I don't anticipate doing much more. I mean, a little bit more now that I'm retired, but I don't see that, I don't see where there would be a conflict, you know?
And no problems with other employees in town or anything like that?
No, we're, we're good, chief. We're good. No, I I get along pretty well with most everybody.
All right, well, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're aware of the time commitment, we've talked about it here?
Yeah, absolutely. That's again, I, I've thought about running for a select board numerous times, but I didn't feel like I could devote my time to it. I worked a wacky schedule, you know, I worked 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM some days and I worked overnight, 7:00 P. to 7:00 A. and the schedule rotates and and changes and it would have been fair to have anybody else cover for me or fill in so that I could come to a select board meeting. It just didn't seem right, so now that I'm retired and I can devote myself, that's exactly what I intend to do.
Have you ever served on any other boards or committees in the?
No, sir.
Of towns or anywhere?
No, like I said, I I am, I've been active in the unions and I've been active in, you know, relief associations and so forth, but that's kind of part of the jobs that I was in at the time for, for the fire department. But as far as town boards or anything like that, I, like I said, I, I didn't feel like I could devote my time honestly and it would have been a disservice to try to do it, so now I don't have that problem. So I'm, I'm happy to, to devote my time to the town.
I said, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ed.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Makes you want to do this?
Well, I'm retired, got time on my hands and I think I can contribute based on my background. I worked 30, I've been in town 73 years, all my life. My family has been in town for each, seven generations before that and they've all been involved in town government and I've been tangentially involved on zoning boards and finance committees over the years and CIPs. And I, I'm happy to give my, liberally give my time to help the town in my, in my, in my professional life. I worked 36 years for Sanders and it became, a couple of the companies that became BA Systems. I never left Nashua, it's just changed names. And through that period of time, I was offered many jobs around the world or international company. I chose to raise my family and hopefully expire here in New York, New Hampshire. My zip code is 03281. That's my intent. Professionally, I'm a contributing engineer, electrical design engineer, then moved up through the system engineering, which basically is responsible for taking a contract or a proposal, either designing a system configuration to meet the specification for a proposal or to actually lay out the, lay out the, all the necessary specifications to meet the intent of the customer, control the design, make sure it gets to manufacturing, gets this integration test. Then I moved on to department head management where at one, my highlight, it was 800 engineers, electrical and mechanical design engineers. And then I left that position and moved up to general management, which I think it's like 1.3 million, billion dollar business today, the division I had. And the beauty of that is I not only was a single contributor, be it the VDGM, I had to oversee a team of people who were all the directors, you know, for various disciplines. And even though I was in charge, it was a collaborative effort and we all insisted on fact-based management. It's one thing to have an opinion, it's another thing to have the facts to back up the opinion and not just the facts that are convenient, some of the facts are inconvenient as well and make the best decision for the, for the company. Other than that, I look forward to contributing to the town aware again.
Think there's something you're going to run for in March?
Not opposed to it, I'd like to, I'd like to see what this is really is. I'd like to see how I can contribute.
That's the water, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I want to know how I can contribute.
I think James' question will catch up. Are you, are you on CIP this year?
I was asked by Craig to chair it, I said yes. And then when I submitted my paper, I said, hey, Craig, I got some, I got some bad news and some really bad news. He says, which one's which? My basically says, I put my head in the ring for a select board to fill till March. And he says, oh. So I'd be very happy if the board selects me and the board considers this appropriate to be the select board member on the CIP to help, help with that, so that to leave Craig and the planning board an alert, so to speak.
So is CIP the only committee or subcommittee that you're currently on?
I'm, oh, technically, we haven't had a meeting yet.
Okay.
So I just, I committed to, in, in the fall, we stopped the process for capital and I haven't done anything, I just committed to doing it, so we haven't had a meeting yet. I understand we've been approved by the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, so. That's the only thing I do in town now.
All right.
Or will do in the town.
And any other, you know, trustee of any other endowments or?
Enough of the town. Well, I, it's not associated with the town, but I am a member of the library foundation. We have a foundation, very generous husband and wife left money to the benefit of the library and it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3). And we basically oversee the money and disperse the money based on grant requests from the library. It's independent, it's us deciding what to do with it. It's five members.
Okay. So again, looking at our taxes, you know, between the, the split between the town and the, and the schools, is an open-ended question, you know, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Right. Well, back when I was a kid, everybody was the same. Nobody was rich, very few people were considered poor. Everybody struggled. Today, depending on your income, the town aware's taxes look very reasonable comparative to other towns and if you're in the low end of the income range, you will struggle with any taxes. And so my concern is, are we spending the town's money wisely? That's my big concern, not that anything nefarious is going on, best efforts, you know, just take a look and get back to my point about fact-based management, see where the money is allocated and see where it's spent. And see if we're doing it efficiently.
So in terms of problems in the town, what's, what's the number one issue that you would like to see solved?
Well, I, I want to focus that on, on the select board, if I could. I like the board to be collaborative, like I mentioned with my team, even though I'm in charge. I trust these people, everybody's expected to show up to a meeting prepared and we, we're expected to have it out as far as deliberation on issues, everybody contributes. End of the day, I might decide, but I've heard everybody, in your case, you guys would vote. And I think that's, I think that would go a long way with having all the facts and having it in the open so people can see the deliberation between the members. I think that's a big issue. The other thing I think, which is kind of nobody ever thinks about, but part of my job, probably one of the biggest jobs I had when I was a manager or director or vice president, was people. There was almost no job at BA Systems and probably in this town, but we hire people for their meaningful labor. We hire people for their intellectual capability, a lot of times such as CDL drivers, firemen and police. These people are all credential and how we treat people is important. And some people actually work for less money if they feel comfortable and appreciated. It's just the way it is. I mean, we've done a big study on this, we couldn't pay people enough to work for some departments. They would quit. We had to go in, I had to go in there and fix the problem, which was the coach, not the team. So I'm just saying, I think that's a big issue because the little things matter, you know, and I can't get into it here, but I'm going to be looking into that and seeing how we treat our people. And the other thing is civility. That's a big issue, not at work, again, we hire people for their intellectual capacities and capabilities. And if somebody's not comfortable, just like people here, if they're not comfortable, if they feel they're appreciated or if something's bothering them, it's up to the management to fix that because you only get in what you, you get out what you get in, put in. I think that's a big issue and I'm not suggesting there's problems here, I'm just suggesting that'll be an area I would look as I do in my other prior life.
And is there a big idea that you would like to see implemented?
I think I kind of covered it, is the execution of the business of the town, you know, collaboration, fact-based and see how we treat our people. I don't mean that we treat them badly, is it that we, do they feel appreciated? I mean, we pay relatively good wages, I know other towns have better equipment within driving distance, other towns have higher wages and we need to make it such that people want to stay here. Now, if there's somebody not performing, then we have to take a corrective action plan. The state of New Hampshire recognizes many ways to do that and we have to do that number of times, not at work. But nothing worse than having somebody that doesn't want to pull its weight in a team of people and everybody else is working hard and that person's causing, it kills the mood. So removing people who are incapable of doing the job or don't want to do the job is important management activity that needs to be addressed. That helps with morale, probably a lot.
And then the last questions are regarding personnel in town, are there any?
I've dealt with all the department heads, they owe me taxes and, you know, PEF, I'll come finance. I think I have a very good, very good working relationship with him on the CIP committee and other committees that I've been on. No, I don't have a problem.
Same, then, conflict of interest with our contractors or other town businesses?
I'm fully retired, I don't plan on going back to work. I don't have any leverage over anybody or anybody over me.
You're quite full with the time commitment, yeah?
I'm fully retired and I am appointed to the select board. I intend to be the hardest-working select board member on the board. I've got all kinds of time, I have the capability to go off and dig and like Ricky said, get in there and find out what's going on in the departments, get the facts and bring them back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Davis.
Hi.
Howdy. What makes you interested in trying this out?
I know your jobs inside and out. I've been on the finance committee for almost nine years. I've been on the conservation board for three years. I have torn budgets apart, gone through state finances to find things out about the town. I know about the lawsuits. Our department heads know me very well because I do ride-alongs with them, I go down and I thank the employees, I also ask them when I need something done to ask them what to do. And when you sit on the board of selectmen, you're representing you as an individual, but you're also representing the town as a whole. Our board needs to, because you're going to ask this question, what is the hot button and what's my main goal? Comes under the word communication and communication means you have to listen to your employees, you've got to listen to the town people. You also have to be able to dig because we've had lawsuits in the past, we have one going on now. You have to know where to look for information, you have to communicate with each other, you also have to know who you're dealing with and what you have to do to deal with those people. You also have to have a certain level of being quiet, there's a time to ask questions, there's a time to be vocal and there's a time to shut your mouth. It is also very important as a board of selectmen that we listen to our employees, but we also help our employees. I'm a firm believer that you go out and see what they do and listen to them and see how our townspeople react to them. I also believe that we need to give our town administrator a little more help because I have all the time in the world. because I have all the time in the world to devote to this. And I don't believe that any one person should be the one funnel that gets stuck with everything we say, okay, we're going to look at this, we're going to look at that. Naomi handled this, Naomi handled that. There's a lot of off-handing that I think that we need to shoulder more. We have things that should have been handled back in 2000 when the Twin Towers went down. And it wasn't handled. So, we have a system that needs to be put in place to handle emergencies because that's not in place yet. And that's nobody's fault, but it's things we have to look at. We also have to make sure that we all, when we have an emergency, we had a blizzard two years ago. And we didn't have the gym hooked up on the generator because nobody knew that it wasn't wired for that. Well, there's nobody to blame for that other than it's a woulda, coulda, should've. But when it happens, we all have to step into place and not say, who screwed up? We need to say, I've got this, can you handle that? And all pull together and show a cohesive, organized, happy team. And that means backing everybody together. It also makes listening to your employees when they, they're frustrated. By the same town, you're going to have town people that are upset. You asked, do you have problems with people? I am not the most, I can be very, very polite, but I also speak my mind. But there isn't an employee in this town, and that goes for all our department heads. Naomi can attest to it, our police chief, the fire chief, Highway. If I have a question or a problem, I go directly to them. I don't go around town bitching about them. I go directly to and I ask for the answer. They know they can always come to me and we get it settled. And it's so important to have open communication. The other thing is, you were concerned about the budget. WMUR did a piece and the state has backed it up. Sixty-two percent of our taxes, people's taxes, goes towards education. That's the biggest kicker there is. Does our town suffer for it? Yes. Do I think we need to do more communication to educate people as to why? If the board says, this is the budget we want and this is how we roll for it? I think we need to educate more. Yes, we have social media. Yes, we have computers. There's a lot of people don't live on those things. And we have to think about how to reach it. We like to think that the people will take time to go and study these things and that they're all going to listen to us with bated breath. They don't. The average person doesn't have that kind of time. So, we need to help and reach out to them in as many different ways as possible. But I have the time to do this. I talked, I'm on finance right now. I immediately checked with Naomi. I called the moderator because he appoints the people to the Finance Committee. And I said, do I resign first? Do I have to wait? And they said, no, you can wait until after this has been done. And I flat-out asked the moderator, I said, if I were to get this, how big a bind would that put finance into? And he said, we can cover finance. So, I looked at that. But I am somebody that's willing to run in March. And the other thing about being on the Board of Selectmen, if you're going on the Board of Selectmen to hope that everybody loves you or they're going to like you or they're going to think that you did the greatest thing in the world, more often than not, that doesn't happen. You know, there are people that are going to say you did a great job. There are going to be a lot of people calling you up saying, what do you think you're doing? You don't have a brain. You know, you're going to get beat up a lot, but I have very broad shoulders and a very thick skin. You know, I'm here to do what I can to help our town go forward. We have a lot of different pieces in this town now. We have, and it's not derogatory, but it's the only way to explain it. You have the older boy network, people that have been here for generations. And then you have people who have been in here the last twenty to thirty years. I've been here the last eleven and in Dunbarton for twelve. And then you have new ones coming in. That's a bunch of balls you're juggling and you have to figure out how to put this all together. And that's not always easy, but it requires more explanations than sometimes we give people. And I think it's about balancing those things and listening to people. So, what questions do you have for me?
Is this something you think you're going to run for in March?
Yes.
Well, I got a lot of answers, though. We've got to try to figure out which questions they actually answer.
I had a lot of people to listen to before it came up.
Oh, that's, that's good. So, I, so I, I mean, I hear, well, so there are a couple, there are a couple of different answers in there. One of the questions I'm asking is like, what's a, what's a problem to solve? Sounds like there's communication. It sounds like the Board of Selectmen should be probably doing, doing more specific items in terms of a big idea, something new to implement.
I think you need somebody who's got the time. A new idea would be to make sure you've got somebody who's got the time that can pop in during the day, that can pop in throughout the week. Because when you're having a full-time job, it's not easy to juggle. We haven't had it recently, but we did actually have the Mother's Day floods. Ware was out of power. We had a monumental winter that year. Ware was out of power three or four weeks. New Boston was down on power. Dunbarton was out for two and a half weeks. That's a lot to juggle. And you have to have somebody that can be on board and everybody, you know, I'm not belittling anybody, but it's real hard to always take off from your job and say, oops, I got to go save my town because this is part of the hat I wear. That's a hat I can be in. And I know a lot of people in the state to call when something goes wrong. And it's so important to be able to work with those people seamlessly, to know exactly who you can call without having to think about it. You just know they're there and you can grab them.
And you're currently on finance? We discussed that.
Correct.
And what you're off-ramp for that might be, if you get appointed.
If I get appointed on, obviously, I resigned from that and they're fine with it.
Yep, easy enough. Are you on any other committees or?
No, I watch them vigilantly. And sometimes I sit in on them. And when I have a question for what's going on, I will go to the department head or the committee head and say, can I have more explanation on this? I don't understand why you did that.
Are you trustee of any, of any?
No.
Endowments or anything like that?
No.
No? So, personal conflicts with anybody in town? Is there anybody, or specifically?
I mean, in the town specifically stuff, no.
We all make enemies one way or the other.
I have a snapping turtle in my yard that doesn't like me too well, but, you know, we're working on that.
And conflicts of interest with our contractors or other town businesses?
The one thing I do have is I used to be a broker in California for medical benefits. So, I know those things inside and out, which is what you're currently working on.
I think you answered the question about taxes and what the, the idea between the town portion and school portion.
I think, I think the town gets a raw deal when it comes to what has to happen. I understand the taxes are high. I don't like my taxes. They've, in the ten years, eleven years I've been here, they've doubled. Do I feel I'm getting the best for my money? No. But at the end of the day, when people are looking, it's the easiest place to cut. But I don't think it's always the fairest place to cut. And I don't think we do the best job. Because the only time, unless you have watched the Board of Selectmen or you come to the Board of Selectmen, or if you happen to watch finance, which we have a very small audience, most people don't really understand our budget and how you get there, the expenses of the departments, what they need and why they need it. And that's a big part that's missing. It was known a long time ago, when we were smaller, it was a closer town and people understood those things. But people moving in don't really understand how this all works. And it's very important as a board, even when we're at deliberative session, I don't think we always give the most complete educating answers that we somehow could give. Because, you know, you're there for hours and you'd like to think that people are all paying attention. And they don't have the time. Life intrudes. But I think it's an opportunity for us to give more answers and try and educate people. So, yes, I think the town takes the short end of the stick and it's not always right.
That's the end of my question. Thank you.
Do you think people without kids in the school system or retired people that aren't, you know, do you think it's fair that they pay the same school tax that people that have kids in the school system?
No. I believe in education. I was educated in the public school system. But I also believe that there comes a point in time where you've paid your dues. We have people that cannot afford, they live on Social Security. They can't afford what's going on in our taxes and the schools are hitting them the hardest. And we have, because I know this as a fact, we have people that bring children in and I'm all for helping children. I have brought in and taken care of three children since I've lived in this town and helped them through school and through college. And they're not mine. They're not related to me. It's just something I did. And that's not for accolades, it's just it was the right thing to do. But I do think we have to think about the people that are in, as you get older, you don't have the same income level. There are people living on Social Security and when you get all these raises in taxes, you just blew out any help they were getting out of Social Security. And I think we have to think about that. I mean, the town can't do anything, but I do think that's a big consideration. It's something we need to be concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Neil Kirk.
Good evening.
How are you?
Waiting for you to come by, Benji.
I know, know. What makes you want to do this?
You guys have a problem, short-term problem. You need a couple of people to help you out for the, till the next election. I think you need people who have the experience, who can get in and do the job and get up to speed quickly. Ricky Hippler is one. He's clearly been on the board and can jump right in and carry his fair share of the load. I haven't had his experience on the board, but I've had a lot of other experience in the state legislature, town moderator, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board. I think, and, and I think I can jump in and carry my fair share of the load and understand better than I do now what the board does in a relatively short period of time. So, you'd have the, not as good as hit Ricky, but you'd have the full benefit of five members if, if, or another member, if I were on the board. I don't have any intention of running in March. Things can change. But my idea is simply to get the board up to its full capacity as quickly as possible. That's why I signed up, because I think I have the experience and the ability to do that.
So, how long have you lived in town?
Since 1970. Helene and I and my family moved in Mount Dearborn Road in 1970. So, that's fifty-six years, fifty-five years.
Close enough. So, you've been, you've been on finance, you've been our, our state rep.
Yep.
Been town moderator. Are you, you're currently still on finance or are you?
I'm currently on finance, yes. That's the only committee I'm currently on.
And you're not a, are you a trustee of any other groups, endowments or anything like that?
No.
So, I'll ask you the tax question. You know, what, and again, it's kind of open-ended. You know, what are your thoughts on the, on taxes, specifically the town portion compared to the school portions of the whole bill?
That's a very sensitive question, James. The school, the school spending has gone up rather quickly, even though the school population is stable or slightly decreased. We've hired a lot more administrators relative to teachers. We've just increased our taxes by $2 million a year by voting by something less than 20 votes, but voting for a $2 million pay package for teachers. And our test scores are going down. There are major problems with the schools, both financial and in terms of results. I don't know that they can be addressed dramatically immediately, but I certainly hope to help address them if I were to continue on the Finance Committee over the next few years, as we've been working in the past to do that. The town has 20, 25% of, of the tax dollars. And the town has gotten a lot of default budgets because people don't know what to do to keep taxes down. So, we vote for default budgets and the Finance Committee has recommended them. I'd, I'd like to suggest that one of the things that the, that the Selectmen might consider doing is to look at the rate of inflation and say to the folks who help do budgeting, let's try to get a budget that doesn't exceed the rate of inflation. Now, that can be difficult, but it can be done. And that's the kind of budget which I think most people would be willing to accept. Doesn't necessarily improve services unless you can reallocate money. But if we continue going as we are now, I'm afraid that there will be more default budgets because folks want to reduce their taxes. And the only way that voters can do that is to vote for a default budget, which is problematic for the Selectmen, more so than perhaps the school board. You have less money to shift around. They have much more money to shift around.
So, what would be a number one issue to solve as a, as a Selectman?
There are many issues affecting the Selectmen, from lawsuits to employment to problems of a capital nature, problems of an operating nature. I just like to suggest something a little bit different. I know we moved into town a long time ago and there were 2,000 people in town when we moved in. And I remember we went to a party where the people at that party ranged in age from 18, maybe 16, to 75. It was a much closer-knit community. People were much more friendly. They understood each other's problems because they dealt with each other on a regular basis. We can't go back to that. But one of the things that we could do is to make ourselves a bit more friendly. I was in an office in another town and Clark's office. Everybody was smiling. It made such a difference. You could hear the people writing out their checks for cars, registrations and so forth. And people were smiling and people accepted it. If there's some way that the Board of Selectmen, as well as all of the other boards and employees, can be a little happier, more friendly, more smiling, more outgoing, it, it changes the dynamic of things. And things can get done much more collaboratively, cooperatively, quicker, with less tension. And it doesn't take much. Benji, you started off the meeting, I thought, in a very, very nice way, very welcomingly. That kind of thing is important and that's what I hope the board can do as a regular measure. So, when Frank comes in or I come in bitching about something, it's, it's not a tense situation. It's, it's one in which we can understand when we lose or you have to say something that we don't like. I think everybody in town would be much more happy to do, would be much better off if we were a little bit more friendly. It doesn't cost any money, by the way.
And, and a big idea to implement something?
That was it.
That's it, okay. All right. Let's see, last couple of questions about conflicts. Any?
None, none.
Any idea with issue, with people or, or conflicts of interest with the, with businesses or anything?
No, not that I know of.
Oh, I, I almost, you, you were on Ethics for?
Yes.
That was, that was when they used to be on.
I was on Ethics for two years. I was elected to a two-year term and I chose not to run again.
That is one of those things from, from the previous questions. Thank you.
I assume you're aware of the time commitment and all that?
Yes.
Your wife was a Selectman in the past?
She was for three years and I'm aware of her time commitment. Mine would, mine would be the same. And when I was in the legislature, I was also teaching at NEC. So, I was running a full 30, 40-hour class week plus spending time in Concord. I can do it. I enjoy doing it and I assure you, there will be no time issues as far as I'm concerned. And Helene will make sure in any event, if that were the case.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Last on the list, but not least, Paul Gilbert. Is there Paul Gilbert out there? All right. Yes, there's no show. Oh, yeah, I guess, there was two others that had thrown their names in, and then they, they decided they wished to withdraw, and one was Leighton Timmons, and the other was James Donison, so. I guess, so we don't make a habit of talking to each other after these meetings during the weeks, I kind of envisioned that we might discuss this and try to make a decision.
Well, we'd be having public comment next.
Yes. Down here, round correspondence, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
So we can get the department head committee items and stuff out of here, so if that works for the rest of the group?
That works.
Any of you that we interviewed are welcome to stay, welcome to go, we probably won't call you back up to the podium, but anyway. So the next would be public comment, and again, I do encourage that we don't slander any of the candidates that are, are trying to fill these two seats up here, please. So with that said, public comment. Yeah, go ahead.
Travis Corcoran, 275 Quaker Street. My comments run to about 3 minutes and 20 seconds. With respect to the no slander, I absolutely will not say anything slanderous, and that's partially because truth is an absolute defense. I will say some things that are negative feedback about candidates, but they're all entirely true, and I'm happy to document anything as required. As many of you know, I've had interactions with Jack Dearborn before, so I rise to share some of the details of those events and to share what I've learned. I first met Mr. Dearborn on 4 December 2018, when I appealed an administrative decision made by the building department. Mr. Dearborn ran the meeting in a manner totally at odds with the legal requirements specified in the Zoning Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire Handbook, published by the state. I cited the Ware zoning code, chapter and verse. Mr. Dearborn talked over me, cited incorrect facts, and in general had no actual grasp of either the zoning code or the law. In the end, he ruled against me. I ended up suing, which cost both me and the town of taxpayers of Ware a lot of money. The court mentioned several errors in Mr. Dearborn's procedures, and in the end concluded the ZBA erred as a matter of law, reversing all of Mr. Dearborn's actions. However, Mr. Dearborn was intent on winning this battle, because, as he later said in the ZBA meeting, he gets to decide. His purported right to decide is why Mr. Dearborn threw away three copies of a survey that I sent to him via registered mail, then falsely said that he'd never received them, then substituted his own incorrect tape measure measurements during a hearing. I know even more details of Mr. Dearborn's actions because I used the New Hampshire right to the law to gain access to emails. At first, this didn't work because the town administrator said that there were no such records. As it turns out, there were, but I had to sue the town again, at a cost to me, and again to the town taxpayers, to get them to obey the law. When our records were finally turned over, we learned that Mr. Dearborn had, one, had a fake public site visit where I and others were present, and where Mr. Dearborn lied and said that it was impossible to visit sites of the lot because of safety. Two, had a second secret site visit the next day, which others were not invited to, where he visited the so-called inaccessible sites on the lot and took pictures of them. He found, three, he found as part of the second illegal meeting that there were other legal sites on the lot to build a barn, so he decided at that point to hide the records of his emails and the photos that he had taken. Four, upon being told that I had a right to these public records, he created an illegal classification system and stark defiance of RSA 91A, and invented an authority by which he labeled his own emails showing legal building sites as, quote, "confidential," quote, "need-to-know," and, quote, "a Tony client privilege." Mr. Dearborn's delaying tactics were sufficient to prevent the release of the damning records until after another court date, meaning that he violated not just RSA 91A, but also RSA 641-6, falsifying physical evidence. This is a Class B felony. The released emails also revealed that he conspired to generate, at his own request and potentially at his payment, a survey which the other party in the ZBA dispute was legally required to supply and which he failed to do, which would have torpedoed his case. So Mr. Dearborn did disfor him to favor one side of the dispute. Additional RSA 91A requests showed that never before in the history of Ware has a ZBA chair taken this step. They also showed that never before did members of the ZBA hold an illegal secret site visit. The damage done by Mr. Dearborn in this particular case is past and done, but the saga was illustrative of many things. One of them was best said by a dozen or so citizens when I was knocking on doors a few years back. The corruption in our town government is unbelievable. The BOS today has a chance to do something about the perception of corruption. They can either pick one of the many fine candidates here, I personally know one like Lori Davis and the Honorable Neil Kirk, but there are other good ones, too, or the BOS can double down on the existing good old boy network and appoint a known liar and felon who's already proven his lack of knowledge of the law and his lack of character.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is that, that slanderous?
No, it's not, because truth is an absolute defense against slander.
There ain't no felons in this room that I know of.
Okay, I disagree with you. I've got evidence, if you'd like.
That hasn't gone to court, then hasn't it?
Okay. I suggest that the board take action to appoint one of the better candidates. I will send a copy of the speech via email, and I request that be added to the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Jeff?
You just heard from a Saul loser. Everything was done with attorney's knowledge and agreement. He made it all the way up to the Supreme Court of New Hampshire, and he lost. Any one of those gripes he's got, he could have actually overturned in court. Didn't happen. Far as my integrity goes, impeccable. I've held all the highest security clearance of the country. I had all the security and trust of my company. I don't, his problem is, he was on the first meeting we had when we had COVID. Okay? I threw him out of the meeting because he wouldn't shut up. Okay? I'm trying to run a meeting, it's a court. It's not his personal gripe. It's a court. You follow a procedure, everybody gets treated equally. Okay? I seen this in the printing, this is, this is civility issue I've been talking about. Okay? It's just unbelievable. Everybody thinks they're on social media now. They get up and saying that they want, everybody's a felon, everybody's this. He got treated correctly, and there was four other members on the board who voted. It isn't me. He missed that point. As far as the second secret one, I individually went there to look what I couldn't see the night before, because we went there in late afternoon, it was, it was below, below freezing, icy, and no lights. And I was, and the rest of the board didn't want to do it. As far as the tape measure goes, we, the ZBA did not receive a copy of the survey. It's not our position to go out and gather information. We're a court, we hear information brought to us. That never made it to the ZBA. I personally can't bring anything into the meeting. We're a court. You ever heard of a judge bringing stuff into the meeting? No. So he just doesn't like the answer. He lost in Superior Court, he lost Supreme Court in New Hampshire. It used to be great before some of these people moved to town. Thank you.
Tom Clow.
Tom Clow, 125 Concord Stage Road. First, Benji, I really think you should have shut this guy off as soon as he started with his whole, what I would call slanderous attack on one of the candidates, so, but that's done. And to speak the other side of this, I've worked with Jack Dearborn on many things in town, CIP. He was really a major pusher in trying to improve the communications for safety services in town. Rode with him to every site of a repeater at all the various areas in town when we were looking for ways to improve by changing the repeaters over from a solar battery base to a wired-in base. And it goes on and on, I mean, I could stand here for a half an hour and talk about things that I know that Jack's done for the town, besides being a lifetime resident of the town and just being there all the time. So, you know, that aside, people should just disregard all that garbage you just heard because that's not the person. I'm not even saying, I'm standing up here saying, pick Jack, because there are other good candidates, too, so you pick who you think is, is right, but this should not be the basis by which you use to make your choice. Thank you.
Neil?
This has nothing to do with tonight's candidates. This is a matter to the zoning case, 03/2025. That started on March 4th and continued all the way through June 3rd. My name's Eldon Towns, 111 Huntington Hill. I would like to start to say before I read this that, you know, our families go way back. I would have hoped that you would have checked your sources and before you publicly did what you had to do.
Excuse me, can you, can you address the board, please?
Yeah, yeah, so I was just trying to be a little respectful, because we do, big families in town, two of them, so it was brought up public, so here's my turn, and here we go. I'm here to firmly raise serious concerns regarding the recent decision made by the zoning board on June 3rd, 2025, which appears to have been improperly influenced by a resident who holds a position as the town administrator. It's particularly troubling, what is particularly troubling is that this individual not only exerted undue influence on the board without presenting any new evidence to the case, but also made false accusations about activities on my abutting property. These basis claims suggested I was negatively impacting the public roadway and neighboring properties. Allegations that are completely unfounded and I believe were made in an attempt to sway opinion and discredit my position and evidence against the case. The use of a public office to target private residents and influence the zoning outcome undermines the integrity of the entire process. It raises grave ethical concerns and erodes public trust in our local government. Decisions affecting the community should be made transparently, based on evidence and facts, not through intimidation, false narratives, or personal agendas. This zoning decision will have a detrimental impact on the surrounding neighborhood and the immediate intersection at Huntington Hill and River Road. The fact that it appears to be driven by the actions of one influential individual acting in dual roles and with questionable motives demands immediate scrutiny. I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to investigate the circumstances surrounding this decision and the conduct of the town administrator resident involved. Public officials must be held to the highest standard, and the residents of this town deserve a fair, impartial, ethical process in all zoning matters. Thank you.
Ray Menard at 1015 River Road. And my concern with the same case that Eldon just put forward was, this was listed as a rehearing. When I asked the zoning board how it got classified as a rehearing, they indicated they had a meeting, they voted, and a rehearing took place. During the meeting, it was stated that there was some discussion around, they should have had a little bit more data associated with, because, with the variance application because it had at one point been presented and declined, obviously, back in March. At one point during the conversation, it was brought up that, well, it's a different applicant. So my question would be, how can a different applicant appeal the first decision? The RSA gives the applicant the right to appeal the hearing, obviously, or appeal the decision, but how does a different applicant actually affect an appeal on a decision? Because wouldn't, wouldn't that be a new application for a variance rather than a rehearing? And that's, that's my concern, my, my question, because no additional data was actually presented. It really seemed like my own personal, and in full disclosure, I am a member of the planning board, it seemed like the decision of four of the five zoning board members wanted to kick it to the planning board. And I'm not exactly sure how that would, would work, they've been granted a variance. If, if there isn't some other reason that they have to go to the planning board, and maybe there are some, I'm not an expert in that area, but it was concerning that the RSA gives the zoning board the right to issue or make decisions on variances. This one was totally kicked to the planning board. That's, that's my comments.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, public comment.
How's it going? Dan Levy from 1025 River Road, speaking on 03/2025. I just want to let everybody know that I have sent an email to this Board of Selectmen, appealing this ruling for RSA reasons. We can discuss that if we want, but I think it's pretty obvious. It's different applicant, not only that, like, it's a rehearing, it's a different applicant. The applicant, the new applicant was arguing that the person speaking on behalf of the applicant didn't have authority to speak. If you are applying for something and you're not able to make it, are you not allowed to appoint your own appointee for that application? The landowner doesn't have a say who the appointee would, could appoint to speak for them, right? That's all I have to say.
I will say that we did receive your email for that.
Anyone else for public comment?
Again, Matt Beeler, 41. I'm here on behalf of Park. We had some issues that popped up, and Naomi and I spoke. I can, if you want, I didn't see it on the agenda, so.
Is it to do with the mowing?
The lawn care.
The lawn care stuff, yeah.
We are going to talk about that. It's up to you, you're welcome to speak right now.
I can wait until you bring it up.
I really acknowledge you if you want.
Yeah, I can wait till you bring it up, and find out.
Frank?
Frank Campana, Quaker Street, for the benefit of the minute taker that I'm sitting next to. I don't want to embarrass you. I didn't know who she was. Getting back to the candidates, they all sounded pretty good to me. My only concern is, and I would be a hard person to, you know, convince, but I would hope that the three of you would leave personal and personality associations out of your decision. I wouldn't like to, I would like to think it wouldn't be a continuation of maybe a good old boy network. Like I said, I think all the candidates sounded pretty good to me, I appreciate them, you know, throwing their hat in the ring, they all seemed, had pretty good qualifications. But again, that's my concern, that there's been nothing done behind the scenes to, you know, to favor one over another because of personal relationships. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? All right. Next on the agenda is department head committee items. Recognize Chief Moore, talk about police detail agreement at Clark Park, is what it says. Thank you.
So this is the July 4th detail that we do.
So this is the July fourth detail that we do up at Club State Park. They have enough trouble where they want to hire two officers. Full hour shift for both officers at the same time with a cruiser. This is, I believe, the fourth year we've done this. But because of the amount of the three day detail, uh, we need board's approval for that to be approved. On your sheet of paper that I just gave you, you'll see an introduction of exactly what that is. And I didn't print off another copy, it doesn't look like, or I did, yeah, I did. There we go. It's a agreement between the New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, Division of Parks and Recreation, and the Town Aware Police Department to provide a detail, detail for traffic control and security enforcement at Club State Park between July fourth to July sixth at a cost not to exceed two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, no tax, tax impact, it's all paid for by the state for those officers. But because it's a contract, we need board of approval for me to sign it, if you approve that also.
Anybody have any questions or? Longest for chief?
Looks very straightforward.
Is to argue about, so I guess I would make motion to accept the agreement between New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, Division of Parks and Recreation, and the Town Aware Department of Police to provide a police detail for traffic control and security enforcement at Club State Park, July fourth, twenty twenty five, to July sixth, twenty twenty five, for a cost not to exceed two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. I'd further, um, make motion to authorize Chief Moore to sign the agreement on the town's behalf.
Second?
On favor? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was thinking about, yeah, I was thinking to jump down the, the, the two bylaws. I was thinking about jumping down below them and doing the two underneath them. And then if we run out of time, we could possibly skip one of the bylaws we have to. We'll stick right to how it is in order.
I know we got, somebody hit one of the bylaws, I think.
Okay.
Actually, for both, for both of them, right?
You want to talk about lawn care while Matt's here?
Yeah, can we talk about this? And then we'll jump back up to the energy commission bylaws. Can we, um, so we, we were gonna revisit lawn care and cemetery contract. I did go to cemetery, I mean, I was gonna bring this up in correspondence, but I guess it kind of fits here, huh?
Can.
Yeah. The, uh.
Chairman's discretion, right?
Well, I don't, I think it fits here, better bring this back today, I guess. I know the cemetery is, commission is, uh, unhappy because there is a whole list of cemeteries that the contractor is more or less refusing to do, I, I guess. They said they're out in the woods, they're too hard to get at, nobody's done them before. So there was discussion about that and I believe there was the, uh, recommendation to, recommendation to, uh, withhold a certain, I was at sixty five hundred, I believe.
Yeah, so, um, back in, I don't remember when, but the cemetery advisory committee sent the selectman an email.
Yes.
With regards to the, um, current, uh, what's going on at the cemetery for the lawn care. If you remember, there was a great discussion and, and how they came about to end up, um, offering or suggesting that the board, um, make a reduction in annual payments of six thousand five hundred and eighty-five. I shared that to the lawn care company. And, um, she, uh, returned back an email Monday, June second, but we didn't talk about it last week. And she disagreed with the weight that the cemetery advisory committee had put on as far as what they could get to right by the edge of the road and what they could get to further in. And, um, she countered, um, it says, I will deduct three thousand from the original contract to delete the cemeteries in the woods that have not been maintained in years. The sixty five hundred dollars is not justifiable with my breakdown assessment above. Our crews work hard to make sure the properties look great. I don't think I'm being unreasonable in my evaluation. I'm being upfront like the last landscaper who had the contract but never did it for years, is what she said. So her counter is to take three thousand off of the contract that they bid on, where we, the cemetery said it was sixty five.
So cemetery's question, I guess, was, uh, she said the ones that were out in the woods and in their opinion, so, uh, cemeteries in question, part of the contract, it would be number three, part of the contract. There's sixteen cemeteries in total on that, that, uh, that portion of the contract. The A was curious if her offer to take a certain amount off was that whole list of sixteen? Or just the ones that were truly in the woods? Because in this, in the cemetery commission's opinion, um, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine that are close to the road.
Correct.
That are not in the woods. Leaving one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that they would agree that they're in the woods, although there was agreed that, uh, it doesn't really matter if it was done before and not the contract asked to do these. But their counter, uh, was to give a value of those seven, um, five hundred dollars apiece and deduct forty five hundred dollars off the contract. And I, I guess, I mean, I, I could read them all off the names and stuff, I guess we need to concur with them. They talked about the sixty.
You said five hundred dollars versus seven?
Cemetery.
That should be thirty five hundred dollars, not forty five.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yeah, it's, um, number one, number five, number six, number eight, number nine, number eleven.
They said forty five and I wrote forty five down, I didn't do the math, but yeah, should be thirty five.
Should be thirty five, if they're gonna evaluate it five hundred.
Yeah.
And she countered, she did, offered to deduct three thousand.
For the same, seven cemeteries?
For the same seven.
Well, that was the question, did she say that? Was it the whole day, it was there and they didn't?
This is the email that has all seven of them listed and the sixty five hundred dollar valuation that came to it.
Okay.
And then she countered with three thousand from the original contract to delete the cemeteries in the woods, which is the seven you're talking about.
Well, we're two, we're a third way into the mowing season.
Yep.
Talking about five hundred dollars, agreed on the same month, same number of cemeteries. They need to get everything else done. I mean, I don't want them to hold up, do the rest of the work over five hundred dollars.
Well, it, to the point though, I, I think they'd be happy if they just cleaned them up once and the contract says mid-spring, mid-summer and fall, so it's supposed to have been done three times. So I think for deduction of five hundred dollars a cemetery, at least do them once is, is generous on our part, really.
So you can counter and say you'll deduct thirty five?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the meaning, I didn't set my calculator, uh, should have done the math off the top of my head, but they, they said forty five and then those are the cemeteries they listed, so. I think it's because one person just wanted forty five and then there was a, a recommendation of five hundred dollars cemetery, but we can, we can check back in with them, I guess, but, um, yeah, I don't, I, I don't think they ought to give away with not doing them. And I think we're gonna hear, um, testimony here in a minute about some other, uh, concerns about the services possibly, so. Now, I won't get into it too much because they haven't been invited here to stick up for themselves, so I don't really wanna.
Correct.
Do nothing, I just, as, as a rep, if you have a concern about the long, you know, the mowing, what you'd like to see done, I don't want to get into the company or anything.
Yeah.
So, um, since you did ask and you said we'd let you speak on, under this, you wanna tell us what?
Yeah, um, so as the committee chair with Park, we kind of work hand in hand as much as possible with WAC. There on the fields, you know, multiple times a week we're not, and, um, since the town is the one who signed the contract for the field maintenance, it's kind of on us to make sure that that component gets accomplished for WAC via the town. Um, starting back, uh, roughly end of April, we started getting emails from WAC. I have some copies of them. There was initially an email from the contractor to WAC and us asking some details about the contracts, even though there had already been a walkthrough, um, with Park, they still had a, a lot of questions. Part of that involved the locks, gates. Um, not only the gate access to the fields themselves, but then also the gates, like, uh, for example, at Bolton, there's a lock on soccer, football, all this is done to try and minimize anybody getting on the fields and doing damage. Um, so there was a question about that and at the time, they were informed that any keys or codes should be accessible from the town. And that as we understood it at Park, that that was the method they were supposed to go through to have the access to those locks. The contractor also asked some questions about various things that were part of the contract specifically to Park, including dragging the fields, um, how they're supposed to be mowed, et cetera. Um, we responded, these are the things that we asked to be on the contract, they are approved all the way up and that's why they're in there. Some of the things like dragging the fields takes some of the weight off of WAC, right? Gives the coaches an opportunity to get more worried about playing ball in practice than dragging the fields. Starting in mid-May, we started getting emails that the gates at Bolton were being left open after access to fields was done, um, for lawn cutting. This was multiple times, uh, we got these emails from WAC with more concerns about the way things were being, um, done as far as the cutting. Shortly in sixteen, sixteen May, we got an email saying that the lock for the soccer field gate had been cut and was dropped on the floor. Uh, I went and retrieved that myself, it was the lock cut, not the chain. Twenty May, I got an email informing me that the football field lock had also been cut and was left on the ground. Again, the lock, not the chain. Around twenty two May, Naomi and I started speaking, uh, to voice WAC's concerns and our concerns about what's been going on with the contract itself and the lock cutting. That really became the biggest concern, aside from any landscaping issues, was the town now has two locks that have been cut, there's now access to fields that are specifically not meant to be accessed so that we can avoid any vandalism, which just comes back to cost to us and WAC. Up until now, there's been a few emails back and forth. Um, we had concerns from WAC specifically talking about the infield's being nail dragged, um, the edging on the infield, the weekly mowing, um, it was WAC's understanding that the clippings were to be bagged on the fields when they were cut and apparently that was not being done. Um, I don't know if that was ever resolved, but I know for a good portion of the season, apparently it was not being done. There were concerns also from baseball coaches talking about how the baseball field at Bolton was not being cut before games. And they had multiple games, they had to play with the infield so thick with daisies, as one coach put it to me, it inhibited the travel of the ball. And they had discussions with the ref about whether or not they were going to actually continue the game because it was causing that much of an issue. All in all, again, I don't mean to go down, you know, come down on the landscapers, I'm here to defend themselves and I have nothing to say about the company, good, bad, or otherwise. I've spoken to Tracy multiple times now, she's very friendly, willing to talk to us, willing to figure out what's going on. But it just seemed, this, this season was just really rough on the contract. Um, there's still things that haven't been done that needed to be done for the season or for Park and the two cut locks is a major concern for us. So Park, we would ask that, um, the board of select take some serious, uh, thought about this, um, and maybe some kind of action of some sort needs to be, uh, done, taken on because we find that this is just unacceptable, unfortunately. That landscape contract just be for our fields to be maintained the way we ask them to be. And if the fields aren't maintained properly, that's a safety issue to the kids. We just can't have that.
Thank you.
I just want to, so, um, is baseball season over? Because we still had soccer season, because.
Yeah, no, I think, I think baseball feel, uh, I think baseball's still trying to decide whether or not they're gonna try and cram in the games they have to cancel for the rain, um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure on what they finally decided on that.
Because we have another, we have a little bit of a break, um, I think there's all-stars or whatever, and then you've got another soccer, baseball across the whole, you know, so I think it behooves us to get it corrected sooner than later.
Yeah.
Um, summer tends to burn the grass up a little bit more, but I'm just saying, I know it was a terrible struggle. I had two granddaughters trying to get ball games in too. I just, in the lock, um, I did see one of Matt's emails, so I reached out to them and emphatically, they're like, yeah, we, we cut the lock because we couldn't get in. But I think cutting the lock and leaving it and we know the ball field is down where nobody sees, nobody sees anything. There was pictures shared that they had a great time doing donuts in the parking lot. Had someone saw the gate might have been unlocked, they could have gone on and that ruins the irrigation, that ruins the whole thing. But I know there's been trying to chase keys and I hope that we're gonna, we've got combinations now, so we can do the combination, nobody should be cutting a lock. But at the same time, communication is going to be both ways because I reached out to see if they had cut it when Matt and all them were trying to figure out who cut it and left it, there was pictures. So they said, yes, we did cut it, but nobody let us know that it got cut and thank God, nobody could in there. But I think we need to solve it sooner than later and, and each time I've emailed her, it has been very well, you know, like I said, hey, the red barn is part of the contract, it's number five, needs to be done. So they went out. So I think they're trying to adjust to our needs, but at the same time, we have another whole season or another group of seasons coming up for the fall that we need to, I think we need to take action, whether we bring them in some evening and have a conversation with everybody to keep us going in the right direction. I know Matt's done a good job reaching out as far as when the patriotic celebration is. Asked him how to keep it a little higher so that all the traffic over there doesn't ruin the grass. So there's been communication and they've been receptive, but the cutting of the locks and leaving it until somebody finds it could have been very detrimental to us and everybody because the irrigation could have taken it, everything could have, so.
And that was my question, just to confirm that there was no vandalism that had happened.
We have not found any vandalism on the football field or the soccer fields. We have not found anything. Now, there's been vandalism in town, but I wasn't going to, that's not part of the landscaping issue. And, you know, my, Park, myself, WAC, we're all open to sitting down with them and be like, okay, what part of the contract are we missing on? You know, do we need to kind of go through it again, walk the field again or whatever, and just make sure that we are all on the same page of the contract? That's not a problem from our end at all.
And I was thinking more of a roundtable, all of us.
Yeah.
With them. Because we did put it out to bid and you're gonna have a full board soon, but bring us all together to the table with Park. Um, there is concerns.
Well, I guess, uh, is there anything else? I definitely think it's a bigger discussion for another.
Right, I think we should schedule a meeting and invite them in and have a general discussion.
Do we want to make a decision on the cemetery deduction tonight?
Well, there wasn't a reduction, I think, asked by Matt, it was just brought to our attention, but I think the cemetery one, we should, because Beth.
It's on the agenda, so I didn't know if you wanted to, if we wanted to.
Because Beth has asked us, you know, if we're gonna make a reduction, instead of making it at one month, you could spread that deduction. You know, we broke the annual payments up by eight months, so if we're gonna adjust it, we'll adjust it for the last six months or something like that. So instead of taking it at one month, we're not that close.
We'll even all get, uh, two different numbers for it, it seemed like it was more, seemed like it was well received at five hundred dollars a cemetery. It seemed like it was well received at five hundred dollars a cemetery. I, I just wrote down what they said. I didn't really, we didn't really take a vote per se on it, wanted to bring it to you guys. Um, cause I was good with sticking with the initial quote. I, I don't like it when somebody bids on something, say, oh, the last guy didn't do it. Well, it doesn't matter, the last guy did.
Do you have, do you have the, what they told you for? I mean, did you mark off the cemeteries? Cause what I read you was probably the ones that were going to be done.
Ones in the yellow.
Okay, so the ones I read you is if they do those. Then you take four, five, six, that's where you got it. There's nine left. So you and I are on a different page. Because of what you circled and highlighted says if they do these.
They do those, the other.
The other, and that's nine, nine fives are forty-five. So that's where they got the forty-five hundred because nine of them, they would not be doing because they're too far off the road. So seven of them, they would be doing.
So yours said the opposite?
I, you and I had that opposite conversation. I gave you the ones that they would do because they're right beside the road. You have nine on there that are not highlighted.
Rest on section three to be left for forty-five.
Correct, if you count the ones not highlighted, there's nine of them.
Yes.
So that's the way you get the forty-five.
So then Benjamin Felstoon, Buxton Philbrook Cemetery, David Buxton Burial Ground. Elijah Dow Cemetery, Green Cemetery, Poor Farm Cemetery, Sammy Osborne Graveyard, Toby Hilliard, Tristan Johnson Graveyard. They'd be willing to let them not do them for forty-five hundred dollars reduction. If they did, Elijah Dow, Cool Chase, Joseph Wilson Tomb, Luther Lock Burial Ground, Muzzy Cemetery, Worthy Burial Ground, and Worthy Grave. I, that was fair enough, cause I mean, they've already skipped out on the spring one, so.
So it's not five hundred, we're talking fifteen hundred dollars difference, so. What a decision needs to make.
I, I, well, I'm gonna, I'd recommend we go with those cemetery commissions. Recommendation, I guess.
Go with the recommendation of the Cemetery Advisory Board?
Yes. Yeah, it's fine, you need a motion for that then?
Mm-hmm.
I move that uh we go. Um, with Cemetery Advisory Board Commission uh recommendation to. Take five hundred dollars per the cemeteries that I read off. So number, under section three, number one, two, three, four, seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. We will uh. Agree that they do not have to do cleanups on them, but we are going to take five hundred dollars per those cemeteries. Off of their contract payment.
The annual payment?
Annual payment.
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I got some other things for the cemetery, we'll bring it up in the correspondence.
Okay.
Uh, well, if we have people here to discuss the Energy Commission bylaws, then um that is next on list, actually. And you, come on up.
And David Erickson, the Chair of the Weir Energy Commission and live at two four six Poor Farm Road. And we have submitted. Uh, draft bylaws.
You guys, did you bring your drafts? I say that's a no?
Correct.
Keep going. Yep, that's the signed one. There's one that, there's one that was emailed without a signature and there's one that was dropped off with signatures, right there.
We did make the changes you suggested as the ex officio Bruce at our last meeting.
Excuse me.
Okay. Just in time.
The first one was an email in Word. The second one is the one that the commission signed. This two attached to the same.
They're identical, I, I think.
I didn't study Word for Word, but.
So you were part of this? You were part of putting those together? You feel that.
Finalizing it anyway is mostly put together by the time I was arrived on the scene.
Yeah, well, I can comment that I looked at four other town energy committee or commission uh sets of bylaws when I put them together. Um, and then we went over them when James was on the uh the ex officio on the commission. And again, when Bruce was, had taken over that position.
Good news is they can always be amended.
Yes, they're, I think the last article is the uh, the pathway to amending them if necessary.
Yep, bylaws may be amended at any regular meeting, so.
Should I make a motion when you adopt the Energy Commission bylaws?
They would just sign it, but I don't think we need a motion for.
Yeah, okay.
Don't need a motion?
You can, doesn't matter, you can make it. You can make a motion to adopt them.
Oh yeah.
It's up to you.
Have a second?
I'll say it then.
Alright, all in favor?
Yes. Last period.
Just needs me to sign right there, the last, last page, yeah. It's the ninth, right, all day?
All day.
Please go down Naomi, I'll see you.
Yep.
Very good.
Alright, thank you. Do you have anybody here for the parks track bylaws? You wanna do them now or?
That's up to James.
Uh, I have not created the final, final draft of that. Um, which again, going just to reiterate, the the one issue is this finding when Park was actually voted on by the town and and created. We thought we had a date, we kept looking at that and and that was not it. Um, and we could probably spend some more time trying to find it or we can just do what we've done or some other things and say if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a park. It's it's a commission and just, we've been acting like it's a commission, so we should probably just continue that way. I'm sure it was voted on sometime in the past, but how much more time do we wanna expend on it?
Sure.
So for, so I'll make sure for the next meeting, we have the the final draft.
Okay.
Available for that.
Okay.
Send that to Naomi.
Yep.
Okay.
And have that available, assuming our chairman is agreeable to that.
Sounds good.
A year.
Alright, next we have the, to review the RFP for the horse sheds behind the town hall.
So I got a vo- voice message tonight um from Sherry saying that um she's fine with doing this, just change the due date. So I've changed the due date to have the um submission submitted in person or electronically by Monday, June twenty-third by four o'clock. And then you guys can talk about it or you can open them and hand them off for their review. Cause I know they want to be part of it because it's their funding. But then it would have to come back here for your approval to accept the donation of their funding as well, depending on the number. So if you're okay, I sent it all to you before. Sherry called and left a message tonight saying that it was okay, just needed to change the due date. So if you guys look good to them or her, which is what you asked me to do.
Yep.
Okay.
So if you want, we'll just move on and I'll put it on for the twenty-third that we can open bids and then we'll have to take it from there, depending on what the bids are.
Yep.
There we go.
Minister's report.
So did you make, did you buy laws? The um park and rec bylaws are gonna be June twenty-third. You did the cemetery and we listened to Matt. Um, there is, I forwarded you a letter from um the trustees of the library. Um, they sent over, I saw in their minutes that they appointed someone, but it has to officially come to you guys. Um, Leighton Timmons, um, they appointed as an alternate. It would be for a one-year period, but you have to make the motion to do that.
Uh, alright, I move that on behalf of the Weir Park Library Board Trustees. Um, they would like to recommend Leighton Timmons to be appointed as library trust, alternate trustee for one year, you said?
Yes.
For one year. We want it ending date or?
Nope, just one year.
Okay. Uh, have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, uh, and the next one, um, we added obviously the bylaws for Park. Um, we're gonna do the personnel. You guys have that thick copy that we are gonna try to intertwine the fire department into the personnel. And then I'll give you the, you agreed on a draft for the review evaluation form. It was gonna take the page one and the other, I just have to put them together. So I have that planned for the twenty-third along with Parks now and opening bids for the horse sheds. Um, I have not changed anything more. Um, I did add to your second page, uh, write to no request that was received today, or excuse me, Sunday. Um, I have forwarded, you guys all been in the loop. Uh, I filled it out partially because readily available were the documents for the conditional use permit that was applied for on Thursday. So I provided all of that information and now I just gotta gather all the information and all the emails from all the parties listed. Whether you have emails, please send. If you don't, tell me you don't. Uh, I need it documented that way. So that's the only thing I've added to the back was an additional write to no request that we received on Sunday. That wraps mine.
Do I have any other questions or additions to Naomi's report?
No.
Alright. Guess we'll do the manifest next. Make motion to uh vote, order the treasurer to sign the payroll and accounts payable checks dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five is included in the following manifest. Payroll manifests eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars is weekly payroll. Accounts payable manifest four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirteen cents. Where school account payable manifest four hundred thousand. John Stark payable manifest two hundred and fifty thousand. As there's no select meeting scheduled for June twenty-sixth to twenty-five. I also move that we order the treasurer to sign payroll checks dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, estimated to be about ninety thousand. Furthermore, order the treasurer to sign up to the amount of seventy-five thousand for accounts payable that cannot wait until the next scheduled meeting. Reports and actual check amounts will be reported to the Board of Selectmen by inclusion on the manifest memo at the next scheduled meeting. I have a second for that?
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we wanna do minutes right now?
I don't.
I.
I didn't, we ain't getting them right now.
No, I just, I just asked. Nope, she shook her head in the row. I was like, did I miss something?
It's alright, that shortens it up. Uh, Selectmen Committee updates, do you guys have anything? Nothing stands out.
You just talked about Park.
Alright.
Unless there's something I, I should know.
I mean, uh, like I said, other than the fact that we held elections, um, all positions for for elections for officers. Um, we discussed the landscaping issues. Um, and then we discussed some vandalism issues that were happening down in Inison, um, that had been reported to the police department by WAC.
Are that, was, are those uh like physical damage or just spray paint?
Physical damage. Um, the softball safety fences were cut up and torn, poles damaged. Uh, the electrical outlet that was on the side of the dugout was actually snapped off. Uh, the PVC pole was snapped off and broken off the dugout itself. The batting cage had netting torn and was partially disassembled, as I understand. Um, no vehicles on the fields, no turf damage or anything uh that anybody complained about. Um, but like I said, uh, WAC made the reports to uh the PD and um they're going from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Honest behalf on cemeteries, um, there was discussion that the mapping of Johnson's was not completely accurate. I did see um email chain today, they're gonna meet with the individual, did the mapping sometime and it looked like the next week or two. And um tried to correct that. Uh, we discussed the cemetery maintenance contract. Um, there was discussion about Quaker Cemeteries that turned over the town and about pending burials. But I see that you, the uh. Papers that you need for the two burials are coming.
I'm on it.
Yep, that was just part of it. And then wanted me to tell you guys that the uh headstone cleaning supplies are being purchased. That's what I got for that. Alright, so correspondence, uh, I was gonna bring up the cemetery moment, that could be beat that rate completely to death. I think we're all set. Uh, if you guys have anything else, and this is where I thought the new board member discussion would come in best. If you have a different opinion, that's fine by me, but we only got a couple other lines after that and it wouldn't fit in nothing else.
Nope, it's fine.
So do you have, I think we had, is there any other correspondence before we get into this?
I just have one, you got a packet if you're interested. I didn't copy it or scan it. There is a um public hearing gonna be held on Wednesday, June eighteenth at the um county complex. And it's going to be discussing cost items for collective bargaining between the county and the ASME. So if you're interested in going to that meeting, got nothing else to do, it's five o'clock on June eighteenth.
I think I got the dentist appointment.
Okay, just thought I'd, that's, I, it's a huge package that came today, so. That's all in.
You have anything?
No.
Other than the, I just to reiterate that uh Mr. Dan Levy had sent a, a request to review the uh. Oh, what was it? The uh, well, the decision that was made at uh, at, I guess, at zoning or was it at uh planting? But.
Yes, I did, I did, I do.
Okay. But just, just to, just to acknowledge that we have received that.
Well, regarding that, I mean, variance decision, that rehearing decision, that's really the zoning board's wheelhouse. Whatever we got on that, I think we just need to refer to the zoning board. I mean, it's not, there's no decision for us to make there.
Well, I guess that's something that we'll have to just verify and make sure. There's no harm in, in looking at, you know, I don't know, I do not know what we can or cannot do at this point.
Yeah, I guess we'll verify.
But it's an official, you know, appeal for, of the variance approval.
We're not appeals boards with the zoning board.
Take a look.
You need, I just want to say you'll need to address it at the next meeting, if you're going to do anything, because there's a 30-day window. And he had submitted timely. Just so you guys see, if you ask me to send it to the zoning board, I'm going to take direction from you, because I'm the person they talked about, so.
Understood.
I do believe that's where it ought to go, but I mean, is that we want to know that for sure, make that decision, or should we?
That's the only thing we can do. The selectmen don't have any jurisdiction.
No, I don't believe so either, but I don't, I guess. That's how I would feel and assume, but I guess I couldn't tell you that I know that law.
It's not about use of a private road or anything like that. It's Classics Road, it's a totally different issue. It's not in our.
No, we are the owners of Classics, or the overseers of Classics Roads.
Yeah, but that's not what the variance was over.
Right, but, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just guess I couldn't stand in court of law and say that I know that I would, would beat it. Should we ask that legal, or is it, do we want to just kick it to zoning and see how it sticks?
I'm going to not answer, because, I'm not answering, because you, I'm the one that they're talking about.
Yep. What would make you feel the best about it?
Well.
I don't think it's something we ought to make a decision on either, I just don't know if, I don't know the legal answer.
Right, we only received it today.
Right.
So, the request today, so I don't think there's any harm in waiting a little bit, if we.
Yeah, but we got to do one of two things tonight, because otherwise that time warp's going around. We could either ask legal question, whether we have any jurisdiction over any part of it, or if it's all zoning. And if it's all zoning, we, we just send it to zoning. I mean, if, I don't think we can say, we're going to wait two weeks before we do anything. I don't think that's a, because then our, the window is closing. If we want to ask legal, whether selectmen have any jurisdiction over that, and they say no, then we automatically just have the town administrator forward that there's zoning.
I guess I'm fine with that, too. I hate to go to legal for everything, but that's what they're fit there for.
Right.
I can offer you cheaper costs, I can go to NHMA Legal Opinions and see what they say, and if it's cut and dry, they'll give you an answer. If it's not cut and dry, they tell you to ask for your town attorney.
Okay.
So we can start at the no-cost route first, if that's what you'd like me to do.
Yes.
That would be, that would be preferred, yes.
I also got an email, I think he, I thought everybody knew, I guess, but I'm not sure he was emailing me as selectman or thought I was still DPW director. Came from Chair Conservation regarding duck pond, so I was going to talk to Jason, but I know he probably had a long weekend with the roads, and today's his day off, so they just had a interest in spending the money to purchase the water level, water leveler they want to keep duck pond at a certain height, but I got that, I saw it later in the day, and I was going to ask Jason if he's talked to him, and I was going to talk to you before, but.
Oh, yeah, there was, there was a swap of an email that you were not part of.
I think this email, the way I was addressed, I think he was assuming that I was still part of the highway, but I'm not sure.
It was an email, Jason sent out an email, and then there was a apology back to Jason, and it's on the agenda for Wednesday night to be talked about at Conservation.
Okay.
I just, before you go further, just, so Friday night's weather with a nice thunderstorm, I know you all are aware of it, because I individually contacted you. The library was struck by lightning about 4:30 Friday, when all the storms came through. In speaking with all of you, we worked a solution and got the people that were running the town hall, so we didn't have water. So when we investigated it today, I had ESP, the alarm service, come out, and the panel, the fire panel at the library is fried. We'll have to be doing that. The water pump did not get fried, somehow it either kicked it or whatever. Cantu Cookwell came today, pulled it, reset something, and I'm not going to get the words right, so I'm not even going to try. Called me back and said, everybody has water. So I did put in a quick claim to let Primex know we got struck by lightning, not knowing the extent. So the pump is fine, there's water now at the town hall and the library. The panel, fire panel, they've called the fire chief as to what we need to do to replace the panels, so, but I did let the insurance company know that we're working through that, and I've been given somebody's name and a claim number, so we're going to work through that part at the fire, but everything was fine. I appreciate everybody's input. At like nine o'clock at night, we were scrambling to figure out how we were going to get water, because it was a nice bridal shower, all set up, ready to go, so. That's basically all I have.
Well, if there's no other correspondence other than select board member discussion, again, we didn't have any discussion out of here how to really handle this, so we're kind of winging it. Hopefully we do a better job than we did last time. Everything's been done in public, so that's a start. I mean, I don't think any of us would say anything, other than everyone sounded enthusiastic and qualified, and, I mean, if I can do it, you guys can do it, so.
I would like to say thank you to everybody who, that put their names in. You're not making it easy for us to make a decision here.
Well, I think it's harder when you know most of the people, too, so it would be better if everybody's strangers. So I personally, you know, take, you know, the personality out, because I worked with a lot of these people over all the years working for the town aware, so. With that said, do we want to go down and discuss everyone? Do we just want to make a motion on a couple of them?
I'd like to make a motion.
And I do think, I do think, if it's a motion to pick somebody, we should do it one at a time.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. That's fine.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jack L. Dibbin as an interim selectman.
Is there any discussion on this?
Do you want a second at first, to be tactical about just making a motion?
I wasn't getting.
Okay. That's fine.
I was going to discuss it for, well. I have, I, the biggest hurdle, when I, when I saw Jack come in here, was, I worked with him for years on CIP, and we didn't do the CIP last year, really, and that guy has helped this town get a lot of stuff they deserve, and helped, you know, he helped me for six years as a department head, and I know Chief Moore, and all the rest of the departments. He checked in with us, he knew our long-term plan, he had the PowerPoint preservation, he took presentation, he took all of that to all the other boards, especially finance, who can be a tough cookie sometimes, and it really showed not having it last year, and I was really excited to hear that you were going to be possibly chairman of that, and...
I think he could do that without needing to be chairman of it.
I guess was willing to, which, we said we wouldn't bring back, nobody back up podium, so I, I, that's my biggest thing, and it's, because to me, the loss of not having that last year, that brings more to the table than what we're going to do in the next six months. The departments really took a fallback last year with not having somebody like that in their corner, you know, and that is my only concern, not that, I don't want to see him sit up here, don't think that he's qualified, I just.
I think you can, I guess as much service for the department's head sitting at this table, and get the point across to the other finance committee and other, other related committees that need to know what's going on.
If he could, he'd be the first select board member to get through to the other committees. But anyway, I, that was my only, my only comment. Other than that, I mean, I worked a lot with him, and it was a big part, the real part of the road bond and other things, so definitely, we missed that last year, anyway.
I guess I would, I would kind of echo that to a certain extent, because I don't know Jack personally, but knowing how he has operated over the last 20 years that I've been in town, anyway, I didn't say to any of you guys, we're going to make this an easy decision, and I don't want to say, that's the tough part, to say where somebody might serve better than another.
And maybe it can be done on both sides, and that, that would be great, for sure. I just, it really crossed my fingers, it could be, because it was, the departments are, you know, suffering this year from the, and it wasn't, it wasn't fault of, well, that and the equipment that they didn't get supported for, you know, and then go on forever of why, but it was helpful when somebody was some ten-year and knowledgeable voice, because been doing it so long, got up in front of them, and it wasn't just, you know, you're always a department head, looks like you want something shiny, kind of was always what was said, and when somebody that has nothing to do, is not going to drive one of the trucks or riding one of the cruisers, gets up and says he needs it, especially the way he speaks, you know, so. That's my only comment, I'm not.
I think he'd be a great asset to the board, and not only that, his knowledge base there, but other issues the town is facing.
Fair enough.
I do like that.
I know he, you know, give everything he's got, everything he does, he does, so, I'm not, you know.
That's just my only comment about the CIP, I guess.
Yeah.
Definitely the reason we got the road bond, so.
Mm-hmm.
I guess we can.
He made the motion, do I have a second?
He did. You had a second for discussion. You had a motion and a second, and you were discussing it, so now you call for a vote.
I didn't know, I just, they got a second.
What's that?
I didn't think we had a second.
James did, you wouldn't have been able to discuss it.
They're getting me on technicalities. Everything, I guess, is up for vote, if there's no other. Bruce? Yes? James?
No.
Think you'd be able to have the same? I've been pulling back up. I really am concerned about that. Really think you'd be all the same?
Yes.
I mean, I'll just throw it up, I mean, you can ask anybody a question, couldn't you?
I suppose.
You run the agenda.
Can I ask you? Can I ask, do you think you'd be able to have the same? I guess I should ask you up there, so everybody's watching. My, my only, my only concern to you sitting up here with us is the impact that you had on CIP, and that you were going to no doubtily bring back the CIP. Do you think you'd have the same impact on the board? Because it was big, and I'm not saying that to blow smoke out the door, I really, the department heads took a big hit last year with all the no votes, especially highway and police and...
Well, I offered to be the select board representative as by statute.
Yep.
To do that.
Yep.
And I think there's a person who I talked to as potential chairman, was capable of doing that. Between the two of us, I don't have any concern.
So I know when you were chairman of that, you did all the presentations and stuff, which obviously wouldn't be your duty if you were just a selectman representation, representative, and nor would you be expected to, I just, it was a big deal, all the effort you put in on it, so. That was my question, I guess. But if you feel that you can, then that's my answer. I'll vote yes. Two to one, Naomi?
That's two to one.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's it, I guess. Another one that showed that would have, have the time, and I know has been part of, well, everybody's, most of the people on this list have been part of all the departments in town, but kind of a fresh face to this type of thing would be, would be Ben. I would make a motion that we consider him, I think the other seat, Ben Goodwin. Do you have a second and then discuss?
A second.
Any discussion? I, I know that he's, he's the animal control officer, he's also been dispatcher for a number of years, so he's talked at some point to highway, fire, and police, no longer hot fire at the moment, but well-educated in that department, in that service, anyway, so I think certainly would understand how those departments, which used to call the big three, not that the rest of them aren't insignificant at all, but coming to the budgeting time here pretty soon, that I don't think it'd take too long to get up to speed, and knows what they need, and it seems like we still have continuing radio problems, which, which really stinks, and I don't think anybody here would know much more about that than him, because he's the one on the other end of the line dealing with it, so. It seems like that'd be something that we threw a lot of money at, and if we don't get, we could throw some more at it.
Not this yet, though.
Right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little apprehensive about somebody that doesn't have a lot of experience... Yeah, I'm a, I'm a little apprehensive about somebody that doesn't have a lot of experience in town involvement before, or really... Any, you know, isn't served on any, any board or committee or anything. There's a lot, there's a lot that goes with it, and we're trying to get other board members that can really come on and be an asset from day one, not have to take a while to get up to speed, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's my concern.
You do have several that can jump right in. I think Ben can't do it. I don't think it's a, you know, I think anybody, honestly, like you said, if Benji can do it, anybody can.
That's right. Yep. They say fake it till you make it.
That's right.
All right.
Man, that's what I've been doing. I've just been following your lead on this.
All right. Well, I guess, I guess I did, um, would you mind coming up for a second, Ben?
Sorry?
Would you mind coming up just for a second? How long you been dispatcher down there, talking to the dis...
A dispatcher since 98.
But for, with?
With Glastown, six years. Previous to that, I was with Amherst Police. I've been Merrimack County Sheriff's Office, Lake Region Mutual Fire Aid, and Conca Fire Alarm. I'd like to point out, when I, I wrote a letter for you guys. I didn't mention a couple of things that I've had some experience with. Maybe I can help with your... I was also employed with the Lake Region Planning Commission, and I did traffic analysis and road surveys and studies for several years. I have a degree in geography, and that was the major focus, was public planning and infrastructure. In addition, I have a master's degree in public administration. Don't worry, Naomi, I'm not coming for you. No chance. So I mean, I, I believe I have quite a bit of education. I've had quite a bit of experience with input into budgets, with operating within budgets. I've not been a department head, but I've been a leader for a good number of years as far as getting the most out of our dollars, which are sometimes very limited. I do have some experience, and like I said when I was up here before, the reason I haven't devoted any time to town committees or boards of any kind is because I felt like with my work schedule, changing every six weeks from working overnights to three to three to days, I wouldn't have been able to devote the time that those kind of positions deserve. And that's why I didn't choose to do any of this before, because I didn't wanna get into something and then have to say, well, I can't make it this night, or I can't do this, or I'm sorry, I don't have this work done for you yet, because I have a career. I waited until my retirement was imminent, which, three more shifts and I'm done. So I do have some municipal experience. I do have some planning and budgeting experience. So if that helps answer any questions or improves your thought on that, that's... I'm willing to answer any other questions you have, too. I'm pretty open. I mean, anything you wanna ask me, I'm up for it.
Thank him all right?
You good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess we take a vote on if everybody's done talking about it.
Make a vote.
Yeah, it's yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those three S's, Naomi?
Who's three?
Yes.
Now, the way I understand it, um, they get sworn in next time, or?
Yeah, they have to see the town clerk, we'll have to do the paperwork.
Right.
Yep.
So that's something they get details from you?
We have time between now and the next meeting to get everybody up to speed with an email and everything else, but Pam would have to be the one that swears them in first. Excuse me.
Okay. So you have to go see Pam, the town clerk, sometime before the next meeting?
Yeah, well, let me tell her first.
Yeah, right. So coordinate, coordinate through you, kind of what I was asking, all right?
Because tomorrow I'm not here, but...
I'll throw it on you, but it's kinda coordinate with you, so they know that it's okay to go see?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, call Naomi after tomorrow.
Yeah, I have my number and email.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah, it was on you later. Yep.
I do appreciate everybody coming out, and I hope everybody goes out in March. Again, this is only until March, and then everybody's got 10,000 people to convince. Well, probably not quite, some of the kids.
There's three, there'll be three seats.
There'll be three seats, because somebody can have this one, too. Fits Ricky pretty good, so. I really do appreciate it. Hopefully, there isn't hard feelings. If there is, then I'm sorry. And I do appreciate everybody coming out and spending until eight o'clock, listening to us jabber about it. And I look forward to seeing the two new members next meeting, and...
Well, that's next Monday?
No, next meeting.
19, 23rd.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. So next, I got set the tent of agenda, and then...
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. We'll see your name on the ballot in March. We've got a lot of other boards and committees that need help.
Well, nice to meet you in person. Thank you. We set the...
All right.
We set the agenda for the 23rd. I think Ben's gonna make it quite well.
Please fire. Yep.
We actually brought to market...
So that didn't really make a difference? Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. So for the 23rd, I think I read what I had. Um, hang on. So it's what I know, 6:30 is public, unless you guys, I know 5:30 was a stretch.
A little late.
Is six better?
It's only because I gotta hurry. I don't mind six, but that's entirely up to these guys.
James?
I don't wanna, if that's too early...
Because those two are retired, so if you told...
I will not be here on the 23rd.
Okay.
So you can have it whatever time you guys want.
No, I mean, at 6:30 or six, we will...
Six would be better, we could have done a little earlier, you know?
Okay. All right, so on the calendar, it says 6:30. Can, let me ask you this. Can we just go to 6:30 on the 23rd, and then before we get to July, can we maybe go to six, and you can have the discussion with everybody? Does that work?
We can discuss the times, yeah.
Yeah, at the next meeting, you can discuss the start time, but right now I have 6:30.
To me, it would have to work for everybody. It wouldn't be a majority vote, because it's gotta, we all need to make it work.
So I've got public comment, department committee items. I don't have anything. I don't know if Jason or anybody's gonna have something.
I'm sure it's two weeks, he'll dream something.
And then open bids for the horse... Chief? Open bids for the horse sheds, and then review the personnel policy, the evaluation form, and if James gets me the final, if not, I, yeah, if you can do the final, final version, we can do that. And then I have the traditional administrator manifest.
Do you wanna finalize that if he's not here? I mean, he has explained it a bunch, but then we could reiterate.
It's gonna be one more, it's gonna be one more edit, I guess. I can ask Matt to come if you...
Yeah, if you want to.
Be nice to be done with it.
Oh, I'd love to. I just didn't know, he's worked so hard on it, and I don't feel he'll wanna be here to represent it, that's all.
Yeah, and I do have a question that was brought to my attention from the DPW director, and that was, he had done those policies.
Yes.
Then we were gonna have a public hearing.
Yes.
Do you want to get those done and move those off the tri-duplet, or do you wanna...
A little bigger. We might wanna give the two new guys a chance to read them.
Okay, that's fine. No, and that's all I had, right now.
Yeah, and then we'll...
It doesn't mean that...
Schedule the public hearing and get them done.
Right, it doesn't mean that something may crop up between now and then, and then Benji and I usually add something if we have to.
Try to get them done in July, if they get, they get them up.
Yep.
I don't wanna lose sight of them.
So right now, we'll leave the agenda that way, let these guys get up to date. I'll provide them whatever I can provide them in the meantime to get them at the table for the 23rd.
How about the... I passed you on that. Public comment. Policy.
From the other town?
The other town.
Yeah, I think, did you only provide it to me, though?
No, I think James, big copy, give it to everybody.
You, you sent that out a little while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, again, I I hear what you're saying is maybe let everybody kinda catch up.
I'll burn copies for everybody at the next meeting, then, maybe we can...
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, look at it.
Pass it on again, we can...
I also wanna read it right in the...
No, no, I can have it for everybody, and I'm...
Okay, yeah.
We won't put it on the 23rd, then, but in the, that's the kind of the outline that I have, and then if Benji and I, something crops up, we touch base like we did today, if something happened. We reserve the right to add if a department head needs something. Because the, it says that the chair would set the agenda, anyway, but we've been doing it collectively, so we'll continue collectively. If something crops up, the chair and I can make that decision. Is that fine?
I'm working, okay, yeah.
Okay. Then that's what I have for the 23rd. So the only thing you have is non-public with Chief Moore at the end, and then you're gonna adjourn after?
Yep. So we're going to go into non-public with Police Chief, and then after non-public, we will come out, and we will be adjourning, so everybody watching. Have, have a good night, but I move that we move into non-public session under RSA 91, A3, Room Number 2, A and C.
Second?
Second, and then, oh, James?
Yes.
Benji, yes?
Yes.
Bruce, yes? Okay, chief. Here up, buddy.